Okay, it's one o'clock. A little call and a meeting to order. Supervisor Penley, will you lead us through the pledge?
My pleasure. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our first order of business today is stated on the agenda. At one o'clock is going into closed session. That item is 1.1, Government Code Section 549, 54.5E, Public Employee Evaluation, County Administrative Officer. And then we will return at two for our only item today, 2.1. All right, anyone wishing to comment on this item of 1.1, closed session item?
Good afternoon, Board. Justin Hawkins from Hay Fork. In respect to the closed session item, I'd just like to, you know, my comments on the matter may be that I feel the Chief Administrative Officer has done a pretty good job, and I really appreciate having someone in the position. I think it's great. There was a lack of leadership, I think, overall when there was no one in that position, so it's very important for us. My concern other than that, though, would be how the cannabis program is being administered and the use of funds within that program. And it just seems like it almost won't be solvent if it's allowed to continue on the current path where lawsuits are being paid out of the fees. Just, I think the fees maybe not being administered very well right now. There's a lack of transparency. So anyways, that's my comments. I would hope that maybe you could provide guidance to the employee regarding those matters and a little more transparency on the issues. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we will move into closed session. Thank you, everyone. Thank you. Okay, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for waiting while we split the last hour in closed session. Speaking of closed session item 1.1, direction was given. So with that, we will move into our two o'clock item of 2.1, Under Planning and Zoning, Receive Feedback on the Draft Environmental Impact Report for the Commercial Cannabis Licensing Program and Provide Direction to Staff. If you recall, we were here all together about a week, month ago, almost, getting some input from all of you, and this is a continuation of that meeting. And again, welcome Planning Commissioners, Chair McHugh, and your Commissioners. And I think we're still waiting for two, but we'll continue. Okay, thank you. With that, I'm going to turn this over to Kim and Derek just to give us a refresher's course on why we're here today and what we're expected to look at and do. So with that, I'll turn it over to Kim.
Good afternoon.
See, I told you you should sit up here.
I know. Good afternoon, I'm Kim Hunter, I'm the Planning and Building Director. I have one more of our Planning Commissioners step in. Thank you for coming. I want to quickly just introduce some staff members present, there's a few in here, but I just wanted to introduce Leslie Hubbard, our Deputy Director, David Kolback, Environmental Specialist.
Environmental Compliance Specialist.
Yes, Compliance Specialist. Pat Angel, he's with the CENT Environmental Consultant, working our EIR, which is tremendously helpful. And then, of course, Derek Kolar, outside legal counsel with SEQA. So I'm going to hand it over to Derek to go over again, just a refresher on the purpose of this meeting and what we hope to achieve today. Again, thank you for taking the time out to attend, we appreciate having you here.
Thank you. And Madam Chair, members of the Board and members of the public, we, when we were last convened, we were at the Performing Arts Center, and we received a presentation from our consultant, Pat Angel, from the CENT Environmental. And the Board received comment from several members of the public, and then the matter was closed at that time. But because of a deadline with, I believe, an upcoming production at night, we had to continue the meeting. So this is technically the continuation of a previous meeting. The presentation has been given, there will not be another presentation tonight, staff report has been received. And so what we will do today is, because this is on a adjourned continued meeting, we will, the Board should allow any further comment that the public wishes to provide to be received. It does look like there are a lot of familiar faces from our last meeting, but if there's anyone who is new, who was not at the last meeting, the purpose of the meeting is to receive input from you, the public, regarding the draft environmental impact report. The main reason we're doing that is because the county wants to make sure, and the consultants and all of us on the project team, that the statements, the facts, the analysis in the impact, the environmental impact report is accurate, and that the public has a chance to weigh in on things that it sees and can provide input and facts and other clarifications, corrections, or anything that you think would be helpful for us to understand, and ultimately for the Board and the Planning Commission, who will ultimately have to make decisions about this environmental impact report, they want to have an accurate document as well. So the purpose tonight, or I guess technically today, is to allow some further comment by members of the public. And then, once that's done, then staff, the consultant, and our project team would like to hear from the Board as to what your reaction was and what you'd like to see in the process. So that's kind of a summary of where we are.
All right, thank you. I do want to acknowledge Commissioner Hord and Commissioner Matthews, they are here as well. We will continue while we wait for the other Commissioner anyway. And I did want to thank from last meeting, which I didn't have time to thank, both our administrative staff for setting up the Performing Arts Center last, it's a lot of work, and the planning staff who also helped put it all together. So thank you for those efforts. With that, Board members, any questions from what we received last meeting, clarifications on anything before I open it up to the public? I do want to clarify, just as a reminder, I think at the last meeting, the issue was raised on some of the water issues, and I believe it was mentioned that some of those did get, or is going to get corrected. Is that correct? Okay, was there anything else like that? Nope, that we need to remind people, no, nothing, okay. All right, with that, we will open for Paul Levick to comment. If you didn't speak last time, I would prefer that you come first. Okay.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. Brian Gossman from Hay Fork. For 15 years, I've watched the Board of Supervisors draft and implement ordinance after ordinance for the Trinity County cannabis community. It hasn't always been easy road, guidelines have gone up and down for years, but for those 15 years my family and I have been here, cannabis policy's been written with a forward momentum on the notion that cannabis cultivation is tameable, and if done correctly, has the potential to bolster the viability of this beautiful county. How is it that after so long, and now under a state umbrella of guidelines and compliance regulation, you, the sitting Board, are letting outsiders run this show, making closed-door negotiations and letting so many years of work seemingly slip away? How is it that you have let the Trinity Action Alliance convince you that their ideals on cannabis are the answers to moving forward in these cannabis policies that you have spent so much time on? Professionals on these issues, which are most of the audience members today, licensed holding cultivators, are bewildered, to say the least. It is the job of the Board of Supervisors, to which we have elected you, to defend the policies that you have written. Please direct council to correct and rewrite this flawed EIR document. If the data in this document does not strike each one of you as misleading, incorrect, ill-informed, and irrelevant to the actual numbers and facts submitted from licensed cannabis farmers of this county, then your judgment in this matter is either clouded by delusions of your own political future, or somebody in the TAA or behind those closed doors has their finger over the eject button on you. The alternatives listed in the EIR, why are they all in the negative? I feel that it is absolutely not within the threshold of significance to present such a document and assume that all other options should be in the red. Are you, after so many years, going to sit there and not direct council to review and rewrite what is so obviously a flawed document? You are being presented with fresh alternatives today. If not implemented into the draft, then you are saying that your positions as seated Board members are a fraud to this community and that the Board of Supervisors is bunk. So it's time-consuming, big deal, so it costs more money. We just handed TAA $95,000. This is so incredibly important, and it's Trinity's county's future. Do the right thing. Revise this draft EIR immediately. Why wouldn't you? What is there to be afraid of? Are you being coerced into letting the cannabis program fail while the people who trusted you to draft it properly watch on in disbelief? I feel like I'm in a made-for-TV movie, which, by the way, always reveals who done it in the end. Thank you.
We are fixing our clocks off for a bit, for one quick second, Larry, and welcome Commissioner Frazier.
I want to reserve my right to comment later, I just have a question to clarify. We have two projects in this SEQA that this document's about. One is to re-adopt the ordinances, and the other is to add the amendment to add from 200 percent of the square feet to 250 percent of the square footage. And so I'm wondering if the no-project alternative means that we're no longer re-adopting ordinances?
So Derek, I think it'd also be helpful for an overview for everyone, what's our next steps after this?
If I can just read the document, the cannabis program consists of the re-adoption of the six ordinances that regulate commercial cannabis operations. And so the no-project, I would assume, means you're not re-adopting the ordinances. But the no-project alternative doesn't take into account what that would do versus the status quo. And so I'm just confused how you can have those two things, and as a project, most environmental documents discuss one project. We have the re-adoption and also the amendment to the ordinances as they stand today. It seems like the status quo should be the no-project, yet you show a re-adoption of the ordinances as a project that we're studying. So if you can clarify what that is, what that means.
Certainly. The project is, as the speaker says, the re-adoption of the existing suite of ordinances that deal with cannabis. The EIR studies the impacts of the program that has existed to date and makes recommendations as to mitigations that should be included in the program when we re-adopt it. So that will be something that the Board would have to look at, which is, do we take the existing program and do we add the mitigations that are recommended by the environmental impact report? That's why we study the program. And so effectively, in re-adopting the existing ordinances, we would be looking at doing that plus re-adopting the mitigations that are proposed unless two things. One, we can show the mitigation is infeasible. And there's a whole standard in SEQA that talks about when a mitigation measure is infeasible, but basically there may be some situations where a mitigation measure, while it might be advantageous, is not achievable for a number of reasons. It could be the cost of achievement is not realistic or does not achieve the project objectives. The other is if we make what's called statements of overriding considerations, where we do not adopt certain mitigations because we find that economic, technical, or social factors outweigh the environmental impacts that have been identified. And so that's, so we're kind of getting ahead of where we're going to be, but that's, the idea is that we take the existing program, we identify ways that it can be improved, and we would adopt the improved program, but we would look at, are there certain proposed improvements that are either not technically feasible or that are, you know, there's a reason to override those based on specific findings that I've mentioned? And that's, and then on top of that, we're looking at alternatives. So, and I don't want to go in detail over the alternatives because they're spelled out in the EIR, but that will guide the analysis.
And with that, can you also explain, we've thrown these extra two meetings in to kind of air out this draft a little more?
Yes.
And then can you explain what will happen in terms of process, in terms of picking up the normal process, where the Commission gets involved, and I think that's important for the public to know.
Certainly. So yes, as the Chair mentions, these meetings we're having are above and beyond what SEQA requires. What SEQA requires first is that we take the EIR for a recommendation of approval to our Planning Commission, and then our Planning Commission will make its recommendation, and then we bring the EIR to the Board of Supervisors for certification. And the certification will have to involve some component of either re-adopting the existing program that we have with the mitigations that are studied or outlined, and then with the findings about, are there any of the mitigations that are not feasible or that we need to adopt overriding considerations? And so there will be a full process that goes forward from here.
Great, thank you.
Well, then, then I can assume then, when you say that under a no-project, that the water impact for growing cannabis is significant? And so is that disregarding State Water Control Board, Fish and Wildlife, mitigation measures that we follow as the existing ordinances stand today? Because you don't list that in there. You list that it's a significant impact unless we also adopt more mitigating measures that you are presenting that go above and beyond the state? And so that's assuming then that the people that are in the program now are violating environmental law because we're causing significant impact to the environment, while being certified by the very agencies that enforce those laws? So how can you make that statement without any backup information on why the status quo is causing a significant impact unless we adopt these above and beyond mitigation measures that you're presenting? Doesn't that open us to litigation? Because a lot of the mitigating measures are for new permits, not for us that are grandfathered in. And so you're saying in this document that those of us that are already permitted are causing significant impacts, without any evidence to back it up?
If you...
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that's what I'm saying, but...
No, that's what the document's saying.
There was a great deal of misperception about the way SEQA projects are defined. We don't look at mitigation measures in defining the project. We look at the impacts of the activity over the baseline, so we take the existing conditions that exist...
Which have mitigating measures by the...
One moment.
No, no, we don't consider the mitigation measures in determining the baseline. That's, that's a misperception that was discussed at our last meeting and is not consistent with SEQA law. We look at the activity as it exists currently and the impacts that exist currently, and then we look at what is proposed above and beyond that, and that creates the delta or the difference, and that defines the project. And then we look at all of the different mitigation measures, which include complying with State Water Board orders and other things in mitigating the impacts of the project. That's how a traditional SEQA analysis works, and that's what we're doing here. We're not suggesting that anyone is doing anything bad or doing anything they shouldn't be doing, but we have to follow the project framework that SEQA requires us to follow. And then we've done that. And I understand there was some discussion, and then there are some folks that think that we, we look at the state regulations as part of defining the project. It's not the case. That's totally inconsistent with SEQA and the case law. We move that to the mitigation part of the analysis, and that's just how SEQA works.
Okay.
And so...
Can I add with what, Mark?
I was going to say, we've gone away from our...
Yes.
We need to have your three minutes, how much time left? We have to...
Three seconds.
Okay, so finish that off, and then we'll respond afterward. You've got to be consistent.
Well, then, again, it's, it looks like the no-project is elimination of the ordinances.
You have three seconds, keep talking, and then he will respond afterwards. And we're keeping questions, too.
Okay, well, that's, that's just how I'm seeing it, because if the no-project is this baseline without any mitigating measures, that's, if you vote for that, that's where we will be. And I, anyway, that's it.
My name is Rachel, I'm from Hay Fork. Good afternoon, Supervisors. For this meeting, built the first prepared by reviewing the ordinances upon which the DEIR is built. So we also looked at the existing current enacted ordinance, 843. During our research, we became aware of a material language that was removed from the most recent cultivation ordinance, 843, in which the original ordinance, 823, Section 3B, only one application counting wide may be submitted per person, entity, or per parcel. On our initial review in February, we realized that this allowed one applicant or legal entity to apply for more than one parcel, otherwise known as horizontal stacking. Upon further review, or, sorry, due to the admission of this clause, the county addressed this issue by allowing horizontal stacking. After further review and consultation for this meeting and in consultation for General Counsel, we discovered this clause also removes the language that prevents vertical stacking, which is more than one license per parcel. By allowing horizontal stacking, the county has now created precedent for allowing vertical stacking. So due to this language change in 843, the DEIR probably needs to reflect that fifth alternative that would allow horizontal and vertical stacking, which is not currently addressed. So at this point, there's two directions the EIR can go. Either the Trinity County Supervisors can approve the existing EIR, a new ordinance can be developed, and then afterwards, a amendment to the EIR. Or you can hit the reset button on this current EIR and propose a fifth alternative that analyzes vertical stacking, horizontal stacking, and the removal of that 530 license cap. Supervisors, please instruct staff to revise the EIR and include the fifth alternative. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Supervisors, Staff. I'm John Brower from Junction City, and I'd like to read you a request that we passed around just today and picked up, I don't know, 40 or 50 signatures on it, pretty easy. It seems like there's pretty broad support for this request, and I've got 10 copies that the clerk can pass around, and I'll pass you the signed copies who haven't been reading it. Dear Trinity County Board of Supervisors, the concerned citizens of Trinity County respectfully ask you to direct county staff to redraft and recirculate the commercial cannabis draft environmental impact report. The hastily prepared assessment of environmental impacts related to commercial cannabis program is fundamentally flawed. It does not consider the broadest range of the most feasible and practical project alternatives available as required by SEQA. We ask for the addition of a fifth project alternative. Alternative five must consider the environmental conditions effects of increasing the number of cultivation licenses beyond the current cap. One of the main objectives in the creation of the Trinity County Cannabis Licensing Program was to encourage participation and compliance with the Water Board Order and California Department of Fish and Wildlife regulations. These are extremely robust environmental protections, and the county, residents, and environment would benefit greatly by transitioning more, not fewer, cannabis cultivators into these regulatory frameworks. We urge the county leadership to continue the environmental gains brought by licensed cultivation. A couple of very important benefits include the required forbearance of surface water diversions from April through October, and a prohibition on the use of toxic pesticides. Lifting or removing the current cap of 530 total licenses would continue to protect and even improve our environmental quality, especially in the priority watersheds that stand to benefit the most from program participation. We also request sufficient time to review and comment on the redraft and final draft of this important document, a minimum of 60 days. Redrafting of this important document to include increased participation is the most feasible and practical way to continue protecting the environmental quality of this beautiful place we all call home. It's signed by 40 or 50 folks just in the last hour and a half. This is very broad community support. I also want to pass you these copies of California Agriculture Magazine. It's produced by our California Department of Food and Agriculture. It's their first cannabis issue, and there are several articles in here to talk about the weaponizing of SEQA against cannabis industry. So there's some good reading in here, and here are the signed copies. You guys can pass these around, too.
Thank you.
And please read them, there's a lot of good stuff in there. Thank you.
Tina, is that a timer? Okay, just so I know. Just so I'm aware. I know. All right, anybody else, even if you've commented before?
Good day. I wasn't planning to speak. My name is Suzanne, and I hear people talking about coming from Hay Fork and Junction City. There are areas in the county north of Weaverville that are sort of the gateway into the Trinity Alps, and it would be insightful to consider the impact of expanding the cannabis program into that area. When people come to bring their families, to relax and enjoy, they may be concerned about bringing their families to an area when they come for vacations, time to get away, time to be free. So I would ask that particularly in that area north of town, headed to the lake area and the Trinity Alps wilderness area, that consideration be clearly reviewed of whether we want to have that be an area that we want cultivation to continue or be allowed to expand. Thank you.
My name is Carolyn Fensel, and I'm one of more than 70 signers on the opt-out for the Rush Creek Estates area. We have been told that our opt-out petition is on hold until the EIR is finished, yet permits are continuing to be granted. How is this fair? How is this protecting the environment? How is this protecting our neighborhood? And why are these meetings held at a time when hard-working, job-holding, child-rearing people cannot attend? How is this fair for equal input? Why is there a process for the growers but no process for our opt-out? Where is the fairness? Permit... Permit applications also only show the AP number, not people's names and addresses. Foreclosures use people's names and addresses. How is it fair that the applicants have their names and addresses hidden? If this is such a great thing, why do we need to hide the locations and the applicants? Where in the EIR is there a process to return abandoned grows to its original natural state after growers abandon the property? The huge volume of water used by commercial cannabis industry has a negative impact on everyone nearby downhill or downstream from their draw. Even if they're using wells, it subtracts from other water users. Many of us are already on water restrictions in the summer. The EIR must take into consideration the reduction in water available to others nearby a grow. Some areas don't have the water to support these large commercial grows. I believe the environmental impact report should include types of properties that are not eligible for commercial cannabis grows. If there will be too much clearcutting, if there will be too much bulldozing, if there will be a negative impact on view and habitat, if there will be too much water use in an area of limited water, if it's proposed in the neighborhood, these should be denied. I believe the license cap is absolutely necessary to keep the environment of this county the way it was, where you've come here to for a vacation, where you can raise families, where there are forests, not just bulldozed, clear-cut areas. So, please consider the license cap. Thank you.
Good evening, Adrian Keyes from Hayfork. You know, I was really glad to see that the error in the water data was addressed. It was off by an entire magnitude of order. I'm not certain, but maybe some of the other assumptions in there are also off by magnitudes of order, but that's for a later conversation. It's, I am too curious, I think Larry mentioned it, about the idea, if we adopt this, the CIR, and it's got these wild assumptions, but then we're able to tailor some of the mitigations on the back end, does that leave us vulnerable to lawsuits? I just want to know that. And specific to the water one, where maybe we would be required to do flow rate tests quarterly and our static line tests, that's such a small dataset with the number of farms that are in the county, that it really isn't going to show anything about our effects on our neighbor's wells, or effects on groundwater, any of those things. And I've read quite a bit about the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, pretty ugly. But the only way to make that data usable, unfortunately, would be for every single well in the county to be monitored in the exact same way. That's called comparative data. And you can't, because you can't work off a continued set of assumptions beyond the ones in the EIR, that when any neighbor anywhere says that I'm getting a drawdown because of my other neighbor, that's, there's no facts behind that. And I've read a lot about the environmental law in Oregon and the water issues that they're having there, and the Clermuth River specifically has some really fantastic setbacks for wells. And so, there's been some lawsuits around it. And what they've found is there's chemical testing also that can be done to prove whether the water is the same or not. If it's hydrologically connected, things like minerals content, pH, dissolved solids will be the same. And so, it would be interesting to see through all that comparative data, once we put these monitoring, metering devices in every single well in this county, what that data shows. So, we'll talk about that even later when we're in the final EIR. Thank you.
I'm Steve Roadhouse, and I've mentioned many of you before, and I appreciate you being here. And I hear a lot about broad range of cultivation and increased participation, and, I mean, you guys have a very big project in front of you. I guess my concern and the concern of others in the Rush Creek area, and not only there, but throughout the county, is there is not a method of operation to become excluded from this cannabis commercial grows, and that opt-outs are necessary for the communities wanting them. And obviously, the cannabis is here, and you guys have a big job of organizing it in an orderly fashion, so it functions well and it's safe. But there isn't a vehicle available for communities, and in ours in particular, there was 100 owners, of which about 70 owners signed for the opt-out. Now, it may be because there was nothing in the executive summary designated for opt-outs or high-density areas. It may be included as a specific mitigation measure in the file, the EIR, or a new amendment to the existing ordinance at the end of the EIR. And it's really so you don't usurp the property owners that have been there many for decades and all their lives. Even in areas of controversy, it spoke in your executive summary, nothing's mentioned. But it does mention designated areas should be identified for cultivation. So, I'm just encouraging, hopefully, the opportunity to include opt-out areas that are available, because we're talking about one side of the grows, that commercial grows, and we're talking now about the other side that really would prefer not having them in our community, and that, you know, communities are broken up in sections. So, if there was a vehicle or a way to have that process available to a community, it's highly recommended to provide it for the community's citizens that would want it. Thank you all very much.
My name's Patrick Collins. I'm from Downriver. I'm a licensed cultivator with an annual license with the state. I recognize most of you, and so I wanted just to get up here after driving over from Sawyer and waiting in on our nice 299. I had a half-hour wait, so I figured you guys could bear with me for just a minute. I wanted to add my signature that I hadn't had a chance to turn in with you, which I think that there should be a redraft of the SEQA. Since I've started this process, I've seen not only this community change its, some of its views, some haven't, but I think largely there has been some changes in views, and I think those are in line with some of the changes that I've seen in the state. I mean, we actually have a law that protects all of us in this room and states that cannabis is legal to cultivate in this state. I've been around longer than that has. On top of that, that is dramatically changing on the federal level. So, I just, I'm sorry that some people's minds haven't evolved, and I just think that the more that we can, the more that we can recognize that the war on drugs has had a negative impact across the board, and allowing cultivation and recognizing individuals' rights within a community and land rights, it's important, and I respect other people's views. But I also think it's important to recognize that this is a quickly evolving issue on a national level, on a state level, and at a community level. And this draft EIR, I think, doesn't reflect how quickly some of these things are changing in our community. And I recognize that there's still people like myself who've always been on one side of the spectrum, but I'm now legitimate on this side of the spectrum. I actually have a state annual license that protects me, and I'm proud of that. And so, I just wanted the opportunity to stand up and state that. And I know that there's people that won't value that, but I think that the majority do, and if you look around, that we would benefit from having a community that isn't dominated by illegal grows, negative-impacted environment in a changing time, a time that really reflects less of an incrimination of this issue and more of a, we can do better as citizens and community to accept each other. Thank you.
Hi. Murray Peterson, Hayfork. I do think that the draft needs to be recirculated after adding the environmentally superior alternative, alternative 5, which would be to remove the cap, make new licenses pre-existing only, except on agglia's or with a conditional use permit. I spent my entire career since 2010. After coming back here, I spent my entire career reducing and mitigating the impacts to the South Fork of the Trinity River watershed, primarily from resource-extracting industries, not just the cannabis industry, timber, mining. We have a legacy of resource extraction here. And I really believe that this program is the opportunity to bring the pre-existing sites into environmental compliance. With or without this opportunity, I feel that the market will sort itself out. But we have a choice right now to either bring people in so that the properties can be cleaned up, or properties will be abandoned and left in the state that they're in. I want to thank you all for giving us ample opportunity, going above and beyond, to allow us an opportunity to really work through this document and this process, and I feel confident that you will all take the facts into account and balance the needs of your constituents with the needs of the environment and our natural resources here. So, thank you all for all of your work on this.
Anything else?
My name is Patrick Fay, and I work up on the post mountain, and basically, I just like to remind people or bring, get people to think about, instead of being antagonistic towards the small farmers and not wanting them in your neighborhood, think about the alternative, which is if you don't encourage the small farmers to do their thing, then what you're going to get is corporate farmers need us anymore. Thank you.
Amen.
Hi, Supervisors. My name is Jim Taylor. I'm one of the 70 petitioners for the Rush Creek opt-out, and I have no problem with growers, well, farmers or not. My major concern is water. I live down toward Rush Creek, and in the last year or so, we had one grower, and he had three wells. He lives on top of the hill. Water rolls downhill. So, right now, when water is plentiful, when summer comes, when it's tight, he's going to take all the water that keeps the plants alive. Also regards to recreation, we're on the way to Trinity Lake, on the main highway, off Highway 3. It's nice to be able to see all the trees, enjoy the real outdoors, besides seeing these little white houses all over, dotted over the mountains. I think when the visitor comes that, he wants to enjoy the outdoors, not seeing what it can be. As far as our economy, I believe our economy, for terrorists, tourists, sorry about that, is more than just cannabis. We don't get more tourists here, I think both of our lake resources will dry up. We already lost one of our boat launches because he didn't comply with the Forest Service, and it just seems kind of beneficial for us to be adding more resources for our tourism, because eventually potting is going to go away. So, I'd like to continue something like, you know, in that field. And again, it seems funny to me is when somebody goes for a license, we have no idea where it is. You get an APL number. How many of you know your APL number? What's your neighbor's APL number? You have no idea where it is. It could be Hayfork, it could be Downriver, anywhere in Trinity County. So, when the district's come up, you have no, you don't know where it is. You can't push your opinion. And by the time you find out, the province has been granted. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Justin Hawkins from Hayfork. I maybe just want to start a little bit off topic, but legalized cannabis is also called recreational cannabis, and recreation ties in with tourism. So, maybe the newer generations of people and their families will combine the two activities together. And I think that having farm, having the ability to have tours at our farms and sampling at our farms is definitely tourism also. I wanted to just talk about the EIR real quick. The definition of a project under SEQA, according to the statutes, is A, an activity directly undertaken by a public agency. The adoption of our ordinances contain the outline of what the county does, includes both licensing and an enforcement mechanism. When we adopted all of our ordinances, it was about regulating cannabis, not licensing cannabis, but regulating cannabis cultivation at large. Okay? And that's one of the main problems with the EIR. It does a terrible job of distinguishing between illegal and legal cultivation impacts. The need for new alternative number five is, I think, undeniable in my point of view. It should be known that Section 15021 of the guidelines says that a public agency should not approve a project as proposed if there are feasible alternatives or mitigations and measures available that would substantially lessen the significant impacts that a project would have on the environment. The EIR does not discuss enforcement actions, even though they are huge mitigation. They have their own impacts as well. I think that the omission by the lead agency and consultant to address the environmental impacts from the enforcement actions is a fundamental flaw. As such, Section 15088.5, for, this is for recirculation of the EIR, says subsection 3, a feasible project alternative or mitigation measure should considerably differ from the others previously analyzed, and we're recommending alternative number 5, which is different than the new, than the alternatives in the EIR. Number 5 would expand, open up the cap, so we can bring more people into the program. Okay? I also feel like it should address the mitigations and remediations that come forth from sites that are not regulated. And in fact, the EIR addresses illegal sites. This says they're not being regulated, but in fact, Section 9 of our ordinance, 8154843, the new one, for cultivation, Section 9 says enforcement. It's part of our program. So, what I would just refer you all to, and I, my printer broke, so I didn't read you guys' copies, section, page 16 of the EIR, these are in response to comments from the Water Board. You should read the Water Board's comments. They are extremely insightful, and they show that, the comments say that we need to have a balanced approach to this situation. It's not just about licensing. The county says the enforcement process is covered under a separate ordinance. The county has, the lead agency has essentially segmented the project into two parts. It's called piecemealing. I think it needs to go back for a full recirculation, including a new alternative 5. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Junction City. I'm here because I am also a licensed cultivator. In regards to my speaker on environmental impacts regarding eradication or abatement or however you want to look at that, I find it interesting that it's, that always happens to, we usually plant seeds in March or April, and you have, May happens, June, and also July and August. We're two-thirds of the way through before any abatement ever really happens. So, these environmental impacts are simply allowed for that whole duration, over the entire season, or anything's ever really done about it. I always found that kind of weird, but I wanted to bring it up today because we're talking about environmental impacts. These, of course, are just simply allowed. These, of course, are just simply allowed. Also, I'm also here today to talk to the board and remind you that the draft EIR has been proven to be bunk. It's bogus. It's horsepucky. It doesn't deserve its way in ink. So, please do the right thing. Just start over, whatever it takes. It's a huge paper. How do you start over on something like that? Good luck. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Forest Supervisors, Planning Department, and Mission, thank you very much for all you guys have done. It's outstanding to see. And my name is Pat McCaslin. I live in High Island. I'm a licensed grower. I would respectfully request that you add a fifth project alternative and direct the county staff to redraft and re-circulate and draft the EIR. I think, to me, the scariest thing is the illegal growers. They're the biggest problem that we face in this county, and they're all over. And I'd like to see more enforcement with that. I just want to let you know how much I love this place, how much I care about it, and want to see it be prosperous for generations to come. And thank you.
Good afternoon. Ryan Tarbell of Hayfork. I just want to briefly touch on a few of the mitigation measures presented in the DEIR. Mitigation measure 3.1-1C, implement measures to avoid introduction or spread of invasive plant species. This mitigation measure states, "All invasive plant species shall be removed from the site using measures appropriate to the species." Starkus was present on my property 11 years ago when I purchased it. Of course, we all don't like invasive species, but, I mean, come on, this is really infeasible. And it wouldn't do any good unless everybody else in the county had to do this, including my neighbors. Mitigation measure 3.10-2, conduct groundwater monitoring and adaptive management. Applicants shall provide the county with groundwater monitoring data for existing on-site well facilities that document well production, changes in groundwater levels during each month of the, month of the year. This has already been touched on. This, this measure, you know, it costs us thousands of dollars and quite a bit of time measuring the static levels. Static groundwater levels naturally fluctuate throughout the year regardless of usage. A well has the potential to go dry regardless of the neighboring usage. I believe groundwater usage should be addressed in a countywide groundwater management plan rather than simply going out cannabis farmers yet again. Mitigation measure 3.3-3, implement odor control plan for the growing, cultivating, processing, handling of cannabis. Honestly, this, this might be, you know, the mitigation measure that's, that's really going to crush the farmers the most, and it's, it's not really discussed very thoroughly in the DEIR. The discussion of odor indicates that the aroma of cannabis originates from 140 different terpenes that comprise essential oils, which are found in all plants. It doesn't provide any scientific evidence that these terpenes pose a health hazard, but it does propose mitigation measure 3.3-3, which suggests smaller grow areas, movement cultivation indoors, completing harvests early, or moving indoors of plants if a third-party odor complaint is received. This mitigation is not only illegal in terms of cannabis regulations, it isn't really based on science. I ask for it to direct county staff and incite environmental to provide additional scientific evidence for groundwater and odor mitigations and revise or remove these mitigation measures from the EIR. Thank you.
John Dore Paul from Weaverville. When I look at the impact of the project, I think one of the keys is looking at the incremental impact of the ordinances on a baseline. And what the DEIR fails to do is to adequately set baselines, especially for the air quality impacts. The one piece of information for PM10, which is one of the major contributors that comes from dust from unpaved roads, is being set using air quality monitoring data, not from Trinity County. And that needs to be corrected. The second is it fails to use the contribution of the unlicensed growers in the county as part of the baseline. Those are two keys. The second is the assumptions made that lead to results. And again, my favorite is for PM10, dust from unpaved roads, the assumptions being made are that during the harvest period, with 550 cultivation sites, each site will have 15 employees, and they will be commuting to and from work every day by themselves. And it would add up to 11,000 trips per day. So, I think there are so many assumptions in here, and what you have to look at with the EIR, it's not an unbiased document. And the onus now is on the planning department to mitigate the bias that's in the EIR to a level that's less than significant.
I'm the Compliance Manager for a licensed farm. Full licensing in hand. And I just want to say that the alternatives laid out in this draft EIR are just completely unworkable and unreasonable. What's being asked of this farming agricultural-based industry is far beyond any other comparable industry in our county and really anywhere in the state. It's widely recognized as pretty much the most heavily regulated industry there is. We keep coming back to the same talking points, which is by making it harder and more difficult for people to gain entry into the system, it's going to push more farmers back to the hills and back to the shadows. Making it easier and encouraging and advantageous for people to come into this program is going to have a positive environmental impact. All the complaints I've heard of like clear cutting and bulldozing, that's, that, if you are a licensed cultivator, that cannot happen. You cannot clear cut and expect to get a license. You cannot just bulldoze the crap out of your land and expect to get a license. You cannot use obscene amounts of water and expect to get the Water Board approval. These issues are covered. I hear you state that the way the CEQA law is raised, that you can't take into account these mitigating factors, but it's not a mitigating factor when we have to comply with the Water Board to get the license. We have to comply with fish and wildlife. We're not doing it as mitigation cultivation. We're doing it in order to cultivate. All of the, the issues that I keep hearing brought up are covered under the, I think I counted it's over seven different agencies that we have to get approvals from, and that we have to get renewals from. The, the notification of neighbors, your APN numbers are pretty easy to look up. You can go to the assessor's office, and they can tell you the, what that parcel is associated with, and who that is. And when you get a license, all your neighbors are notified. There's a public comment period. The EIR document, as I look at it, is like the gentleman before me just said, seems clearly biased to me. I think it should be rewritten, it should be recirculated with a different firm. I think Ascent Environmental has not done a good job on this. I think we should cancel that contract, get back any money that's been paid into that, and find a firm that will do a fair and honest job. There are plenty of other counties in our state that have moved forward with this process. The, the state has done a statewide EIR that covers this process. And here we are, once again, making it as hard as possible for anybody to come into the light, to come in, to pay taxes, to have honest accounting for the actions that we take. You're making it harder, which is just, directly leads to worse environmental impacts. If you push people out of this program, if you limit the number of licenses, if you put these, these regulations that are, and these mitigating factors that are just completely unworkable, and no other industry has to abide by anything close to that, you're pushing people out of the system, back to the shadows, and there's no environmental oversight of somebody growing up in the woods. And all of the complaints are from, stem from unregulated growers, from unlicensed growers. The, the accountability that a license holder has is unbelievable, the amount of agencies and renewals and licenses and forms and applications and check-ins and inspections. We got a surprise inspection this year. We passed, no violations. I know they did surprise inspections all over the county. So, a lot of the complaints are just absurd because they're already covered under many, many other programs and, and the over seven plus agencies that we already have to deal with. Thanks.
There was a long pause there, Madam Chairman, because I wasn't sure if I was going to step up or not. I'm no CEQA expert. I think Mr. Cole is, but it seems to me like the board, first of all, let me back up. I think we all owe you a vote of thanks for providing these extra sessions to comment on this subject, even though it wasn't required by CEQA. There are some pretty harsh words exchanged from time to time in public meetings like this, but nevertheless, I think you're to be commended for providing these extra audiences so that everybody can get up and air their grievances or flatter, whichever it may be. But getting back to the subject at hand, it seems like to me the board can either follow the path recommended by some people to say, well, we're just going to tear this up and throw it out, and hire a new firm and go forward that way. But one thing we know for sure, the county has to have an EIR on our system of ordinances, and there's a deadline for that. And it seems to me that the alternative to tear it up and throw it out is to refer matters to, to staff with the direction that staff come up with a thorough, objective set of alternatives within the framework of this EIR. Now, there are things in there that I, I don't think are accurate. Obviously, there are a lot of people who think there are inaccuracies in various areas. The mitigation measures that are recommended, personally, I think some of them are too onerous. I think that unpaved roads weren't adequately covered. But let's get it to staff, let them apply their expertise, and we do have a beefed-up staff now, and come back to the board with what alternatives you have. I understand that portions of the EIR, the draft, can be modified in the process through the planning department. Many of the concerns that are expressed perhaps can be clarified, maybe answers come up. But that seems to me like a more direct path forward for the board, without taking sides on any one of these particular individual issues that have been there. Make you, make use of the expertise available and, and see what they come up with, rather than simply making a cataclysmic decision right now, one way or the other. You don't have to buy the whole package or throw out the whole package at this point. Thank you.
Teacher Brower, thank you for hearing us all again. There were a lot more specific comments at prior meetings, and I believe written, that were received, that really went into detail on the draft EIR. So, I hope that you have read them and considered them, and today seem to be not so focused on them. But Mr. Letton is absolutely right, there is a deadline. Time is of the essence, and I don't think anybody wants to slow this down. But we do want the most environmentally responsible alternative, which is to let the pre-existing in. They will, those sites will get abandoned. They're not under the same stringent standards that all the licensed farmers are. And allowing for those opportunities is, you know, something to be considered at this stage in CEQA. And then, at that point, once we've gone through there, then we can talk about the other concerns that people have with their neighborhoods and communities that really don't want this. And so, I, I don't want to just push that aside and act like those concerns aren't important. But I think in order to really consider what our options are, we need to look broadly now, and then when the ordinances get reworked, look at the other factors that are considered at that point. Thank you.
All right. I don't see any more. We're having to take a five-minute break before we tackle some of these questions. Okay? So, we have a lot of questions and comments from the board and what we've heard, so anyone want to kick off? Any particular questions?
Well, I appreciate everybody coming in. Having farmed in a previous life not that long ago, I do realize that farmers work 365 days a year, seven days a week. Your cows are out in the field, and it's 10 feet of snow, you still have to go feed. So, there is no such time for you. So, I know you've come from all over the county, and I know some of you had to, to really trek in over some mountains, so I appreciate that. Appreciate all the comments. I want to say a great big thank you to Kim Hunter, our new director, who made this possible for all these extended listening sessions. And I have what I would like to propose, but I don't know if it's premature, or if you want me to wait.
Yeah, I would like to get some, if there's any questions for us board members to get clarification.
Just a great big thank you for the planning commissioners that made it too. Thank you.
Okay. So, do you want to jump in?
I'll just ask a question of Margaret and Derek. So, it's been proposed by people that we do an alternative that doesn't exist in the law, you know, lifting the caps off, and that we do an EIR on that. Can you do an EIR on a subject that we, that doesn't exist, that the law doesn't pertain to, or that we're just speculating what we might want to do?
You're referring to lifting the 500 cap?
Right.
I understand that's referred to by some as an alternative five, but I think legally that would be a revised project. Currently, the project is a program that has as an essential feature a cap of 500 licenses. And so, if you're going to eliminate that cap, or you're going to raise that cap, you're essentially revising the project. And so, I think staff, the consultant and I, and council would look at that as a modification to the project. That would result in a recirculation. So, I think those who are advocating for a alternative five, as they call it, and recirculation are correct, that we would have to go back and work on the analysis. What would be a little different is that if we treated it as an alternative, which we can't because it's such a fundamental change, is we would just... is we would just go back and analyze the alternative. Would the change by removing that cap, because that would allow so much more licensed regulation, we'd have to go back and look at every aspect of what we've studied so far. So all of the different areas, biological impacts, water impacts, public utility impacts, traffic impacts, air impacts, all the like, we'd have to go back and look at the analysis and revise it. And then we would probably have to go back and look at all of the alternatives we've studied so far, and then we'd have to maybe look at other alternatives. So it's a long way of saying that we can go back and look at lifting the cap. It's just it's not going to be an alternative. It's going to be a project change, but...
In fact, Javon, I believe the question is a little more deeper than that, which is, do you consider as a modified project something which the legislature hasn't agreed to yet? Because the question was, lift above what our current cap is, which is not currently law. Would that be a possibility? My understanding is that that would not be because, again, it's not something that's been contemplated by our legislative body, and so it's not even an option at this time until it comes back to them for... Does that make a little more sense?
It does. It does. I mean, it's not something that's codified. I think we can propose it and we can pursue it as a revised project. And then the project would be a new ordinance, not just simply the readoption of the ordinance, but a new ordinance that lifts the cap. So it's a revised project that we could consider. And before we actually bring an ordinance that lifts this cap or raises the cap, we have to do the analysis. So that's how it would function. But either way, there's more analysis that would be involved. And we'd have to, Pat would probably be able to talk a little bit better about it. And frankly, we'd probably want time to better write it up and present it to you as an option. So we're sort of speaking off the cuff here. But it can be done. I mean, where there's a will, there's a way. I mean, if that is the pleasure of the board to look at that, I think we can bring something back to you that outlines how we can do that.
But normally, in this process, and it doesn't matter if it's a cannabis or a gravel ordinance, we would direct staff to write an ordinance that lifts the cap, which at that point, staff would then go and have to do all the environmental work, write the ordinance, and then bring that forward. Is that correct?
Yes. And so really, the question is, what does staff need from you today? If it's the pleasure of the board to want to consider this option of lifting the cap, I think really, we would probably need to stop and just take that basic direction and come back to you and present a framework for how that could be done. And then, at that meeting, whenever that meeting is, the board could then give the type of direction Supervisor Groves that you're contemplating because that is something we would need before we actually... Because that's a lot more work for our consultant. And so we want to scope out with his firm, and then obviously, we want to look internally at all the things we need to do. So we would ask that board for that direction, but that would have to come at a future date.
So I'm just going to follow up and thank you for your patience. But if we gave direction to look at the 500, within any direction we gave within the cap, you could move forward, and there's nothing precluding us from a later date to look at a ordinance, give direction to lift the cap and do environmental work at a later date. Is that correct?
I would agree with that. What I would say is, you can kind of go two ways. One would be to, if you want to lift the cap before you adopt an EIR, then you can order us to find a way and present the method to do that, and then have you give us direction. Another option would be to just move forward with the EIR as we have it, adopt that. And then, once that adoption is done, then we could address the issue of increasing the cap at that point. So it's sort of like a staged... One way we could go is just revise the project and do it all now. The other way is a staged, where we adopt what we have now and then bring the elimination of the cap back at a second step. But I would say that if the board, the board probably should take a moment and decide which it wants to do in the next, you know, either sort of... We need to do that sooner rather than later. In other words, we don't want to go and get to the end of the process of adopting the EIR we have now and then have the board say, you know what, maybe we should do the cap, raise the cap, so let's do that now. I mean, I think if you want to... You should decide now if you want to deal with the cap issue, or decide in the short term.
So we do have other ordinances that are waiting for our EIR to move through. If we sent everything back and lifted the cap today and then it might take another year or whatever to get that back through, that would still hold up all the other ordinances that are waiting for this EIR to be completed. Is that correct?
Correct. Yeah, it's a longer, it's a longer time for all of the other things that we need to do.
Supervisor Chadwick? Actually, he covered it. So I have a comment later, but it's a comment, so I'll let Supervisor Chadwick go ahead.
Do you have anything?
Just regarding the cap, if we can't handle what we're doing now, why are we changing it? That's it.
Okay. And then I'll go ahead with my comment. I have a couple of questions. Oh, she goes ahead. I'm sorry. So I'm going to just go back to some technical questions. This is a little bit more, a larger question. It's been mentioned a couple times, you know, in the ordinances, our license holders do need to jump through a bunch of hoops with a bunch of agencies. And do we feel that it was looked at in the creation of this EIR in terms of the protections that they have to, that they gain? They may not see it, not see it that way, but there is protections for the environment given the agencies they have to deal with. Are we doubling up on that with the mitigations that are in our EIR? If it's not covered by those rules?
Sure. So the answer to that is, because we have chosen to regulate at the local level, we have an obligation to make sure that all of the impacts associated with a cannabis use are addressed. Because what the state does when the locals decide to regulate is they have the locals do their regulation, and then they come and do theirs once the local agency is active. So just going from a CEQA standpoint and going back to my comments earlier, we do have to look at the totality of the impacts of the project. And we do that by looking at the physical change to the environment between what exists at the time of the project and what will exist after the project. And so, yes, the people who are in the system now and who are growing and who have been growing have been dealing with the state, and they've gotten, as many speakers I think have eloquently pointed out, they have had to jump, I mean, they've dealt with six or seven agencies. I think we all, none of us disputes that. But from a, just from the way CEQA requires us to look at it, is we look at those mitigations after we've defined the project and after we've looked at the difference between the post-project and pre-project conditions. And that's just how CEQA is structured. What I will say as a practical matter is, those state regulations that the growers have to follow substantially cut down the impacts. And they take the level of impact often to a point of insignificance. And so in many cases, we would issue a license simply by finding that someone is going to comply with their state license. We're not going to, when we are in the field or when we're in the application stage, we're simply going to say, well, you meet state regulation. Have you met state regulation? It's simply a checkoff. And so as a practical matter, we're not piling on. We're not creating redundancy. We are actually addressing some additional issues. But one example I'll use is the traffic example. When you go to the state, you're really not going to address the traffic impacts. You're not going to address the impacts of those dirt roads or those gravel roads that some people have accessing their grow site. So that's a different issue that we address locally that the state isn't addressing. And so I understand folks have concerns, and they're understandable. Why am I complying with these seven agencies and now the county is telling me to do this? But there are things that the county will look at that the state is not looking at. But when it comes to the things the state is looking at, all we're doing is checking the box, are you complying with state law? It's not anything beyond that.
Thank you for that clarification. And then the other one that keeps being asked, and I don't think it really got addressed yet. We have a neighborhood who desires a carve-out. And they've been instructed, told, we're in this EIR process. So could you bring some clarification to that question?
That's really a change to the ordinance. And so, I mean, that's...
But we can't do anything until this is finished, and I think that may be not clear.
Correct. I think we need to define the scope of the impacts of the project and how they will be mitigated. And then, once we've done that, then I think the board will have the tools to assess whether it's appropriate to add these opt-outs. I mean, I understand that there are some based on certain areas. But really, I think the board will want to understand the programmatic impacts of the cannabis program before it decides, should we embark on creating these opt-out areas? So I think really, it's, we're sort of, I understand that the request is out there, and certainly, the board can and should consider that request if it's... But that's a legislative change, and I think you'll be in a better position to assess that change once you've understood the project, the program altogether.
Okay. Those were my clarifications I wanted to have addressed for the public. All right. Questions? Supervisor Chadwick?
Yes, I know that copious notes have been made by the consultant and staff. And so my question to you is, and we'll call it alternate five for now, just because that cleans it up with an understanding. I understand you're saying that that's not in the packet. But based on the comments that were made, not only today, but in previous listening sessions, could we direct you to come back with options based on what you've heard and what a no cap would look like and how that would prohibit or allow us to move forward and what the timeframe is? Could we direct you to do that?
Yes, absolutely. And if that's the direction the board wants to give, I think on behalf of your planning director and our staff, we would like time to caucus, write that up, prepare a staff report, and then present that to you at a future meeting. But we can absolutely do that.
So if the board also desired a look at some other measures, you would bring that back to us, of course, as well.
We serve at the pleasure of the board, and so, you know, if you have some things you want us to bring back to you, the only request is that you give us some time to write it up appropriately and present it to you appropriately.
Okay. Any comments from either one of you? Board members, any more would you like to go with this?
Well, I have some disobservations. One is, there's a lot of kind of misunderstanding what an EIR is and does. The EIR, and Kim can throw something at me anytime when I get out of line. The EIR is designed to notify the governing body of mitigations and actions that may deal with what you've been notified in. Because they put a mitigated measure, mitigation measure in here does not make it law. It makes it a suggestion that if you did this, it would mitigate that issue. But it doesn't tell you you must mitigate it that way. And as was pointed out earlier, that if it's unreasonable to do, then it doesn't have to be done. So they are just giving you the kind of worst-case scenario if you have. And then, at that point, it goes to staff where they write up, and it goes to the planning commission where they say, no, this is unreasonable. You can't have people do this. And then it comes to the board. So this is not an ordinance. It just highlights the problems. Am I even close? I think there's a huge time constraint. We are 18 months away from the deadline roughly. And we, it's been 20 months since we gave the okay to get this one done. I don't see that we can dilly-dally around on this. I understand the lifting of the caps, and I understand the reasonings on that. But to me, the proper situation is to direct staff to work off the 530 number, which is, and then to correct any errors, if it's traffic studies or water issues, or whatever errors there are in it to make it more accurate. But I think it's imperative to get this part done. We can call this step one. After this is drafted, any other changes into our ordinance? Have their own environmental documents. If this is a good enough document, then those other ones can be tiered off of this and maybe negative decks. Maybe they would have to have their own EIRs, but those are bridges you cross in a later day. So speculating, I don't think we could, I honestly don't think that we could say lift the caps and get it done in 18 months.
I think that's their analysis that they would come back to us with. Am I wrong?
Every day that goes by is the day that...
So are you saying, is the board saying they're content with any of these alternatives up till four?
Well, we're not, we're not giving, we don't tell them the alternatives. We're giving them directions of how to move forward and...
Right. But one is, one is still stuck at the 280, and I understand you said, bring it back to the normal.
Well, I think there needs to be a analysis, a clearer analysis of the 530 of what we have, the mitigations on that, to move forward. I guess I do have another question. In an alternative one, you could do nothing alternatively.
I have it right here.
Thank you. I had it right here. Would that then put it in a position where every grower would then have to, every person applying for a permit would have to do their own environmental analysis? Since the county would not have an environmental analysis?
That could be the case. If we do the no project and we simply take the ordinance that we have without changing it or readopting it, we run the risk or we will have effectively, well, let me start over. When we adopted the ordinance and we readopted the ordinances, we did so under the SB 1094 framework, which said, you have until July 1, July 1, 2019 to complete your environmental review. That's now been extended. So when we enacted those ordinances, we did so with the understanding that we would be programmatically looking at the ordinance and then doing an EIR. If we ultimately do that and we don't adopt the mitigation measures of the EIR, I do think then that we may not be able to, we'd have to look at each site again individually and decide whether we need, at a minimum, we'd probably have to do an initial study. In other words, I don't think we can just rely on what they did last year or rely on the exemptions that we're relying on now because we've been doing that with the idea that we've got this EIR, programmatic EIR, that we're going to be adopting. And initially, we were going to be adopting it in July this year. Now we're kicking that back a little bit. But if we just don't adopt anything, then we don't have the ability to say, well, you know, we're going to do that programmatic analysis, and we're going to use the benefits of that programmatic analysis to change our program and make it better. If we don't do that, then I think... If we don't do that, then I think each site application will have to be looked at much more thoroughly.
So I go back to what I said earlier. I believe that staff and consultant and our council has a good idea of what the community at large, especially stakeholders, have in mind, and I just want to know, based on their expertise, what our options are. I'm just asking for the options. That's all.
Along that line, Supervisor Chapman, if we were to...
It's okay.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Chadwick.
What did Chapman say?
She used to sit there.
Yeah, so did I.
I've had her use.
Along the line that you're thinking, is staff, would staff like to have this back with all of this input, and give us some additional suggestions? What would you like, Kim? You're the one that has to do a lot of writings, or, I'm sorry, everybody else does. You don't do anything with it.
It comes back to what Derek said a little bit earlier in the comment. Yeah, we're getting an idea of what you'd like to see back, but for us to really, you know, yes, to come back at a later meeting and flush what we've heard out and present it to you, and there's pros and cons, so many pros and cons to these directions that we take, and you see, you know, with these questions, starting to look at each other, and, you know, and we're getting an area where, yeah, we need to flush those out more and develop those.
So is this an opportunity you'd like to take?
Yes.
And that was the plan. They were going to come back to us anyways with whatever was discussed up here, and flush it out a little bit more. All right, so...
It's a direction I would like to see.
All of it come down?
No, I'd like to have them to, I'd like to have staff to take some time and listen to people. I think they have a better handle on it now, and I think there's some people that are concisely in charge of moving forward with this, and might know what we want, but definitely know what the public would like to see.
Okay, so do we, fall kind of vague from our viewpoint, what we're asking, so do you need a little more direction, a little more clarity, or do you think you've got?
I think we can present something intelligent to the board in light of what we've heard from the public and the board's deliberation. I guess the question then is scheduling, and I will defer to Kim on when we can have that back to you. I assume not. Are you even having a meeting with the rest of the...
Next week, there's no way.
Yeah. So I assume we're looking at January at a minimum.
Right. Okay. Any other questions? From the board? Okay, so I think we'll see some options in January, hopefully early January if possible, and we'll go from there. Any other? Margaret, anything else? Board members?
Did we want to ask, planning commissioner, do they have any questions?
You'll probably come back and join us again, hopefully the date will work.
I'm going to.
Correct answer. Thank you, Chair. And gentlemen, thank you for joining us again. I think you can hear, and you're going to hear it again at your meetings. And those meetings are at night, by the way, for those wanting to know about night meetings. This will eventually go back to the commission at night, so, all right. Any other comments, questions from commissioners at the moment? Okay. All right, so with that, if there's nothing else from the board or staff, we'll work out a schedule for next year, early January, and with that, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming.